Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 6th, 2018 Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have a few items on the agenda this evening, and we are going to go a little bit out of order. We are going to have Carolyn O'Hare give us an update on the National Folk Festival first. That's okay if you're ready. Carolyn, nice to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. Would you like an update?
Absolutely.
All right, wonderful. Well, we've had a few things happen in the past month that I'd like to share. One is that our juried marketplace, the artisans that are in that marketplace have been announced and actually are starting to be interviewed by local media. They span several different genres from watercolor to pottery to woodworking to fabric, sorry, fiber arts to even something called nature art, which is utilizing bugs and things like that. So it's actually quite a wonderful, diverse group and will be quite popular at the festival. We have also been making a heavy push, I'm sure you all know, for volunteers. We need volunteers for this festival to keep this festival free, to keep it accessible for all. So one thing I would love for all of you guys to do, and I know that you have, some of you have actually signed up, look over here, to be a volunteer, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. I have volunteer cards here that I would love if you would share with your constituents and with your community, with your social groups, your church groups. And honestly, if everyone pitches in a little, it really, it seems like a lot, but when someone just steps up and says, "I'll do my part," we can do this very quickly and have a good time. The sign up is at suregetconnected.org. But again, I have cards here for each of you, and I can also send this to you electronically. I'd greatly appreciate your help in spreading the word. We also have a little bit more information about our Artists in Schools program. That's where we have about, I think it's a dozen different performing groups that will be going into Wycomico Public Schools the Friday before the festival starts. We will be able to engage with approximately 3,500 students in 18 different shows. And that has been an incredible project that I think our students, most of them are eighth grade and below, are going to remember for a lifetime. So I'm very excited about that, that that's taking shape. Let's see, all our performers have been announced, and you can check them out on our website. It's an incredible assortment, and we also have street performers that are coming, circus art buskers, and a variety of other just unusual suspects. So it's going to be quite joyous. We are still working on our fundraising. The first year, it's a heavy lift because there's a lot of capital to buy first up. Second year, I think it'll be a little bit lighter for us. We're between 80 and 90 percent with our fundraising goal, and we continue to seek out sponsorships, grants, and assistance. We'll probably do that way past the festival because this is not a one-year thing, this is a three-year thing. Any money that we make that goes over what we need goes into the next festival. So we'll continue doing this. We don't see this as, oh, good, we're done. We're just going to keep going and keep improving. Let's see. Our program guide is currently being built. It's the official festival program guide. It's about 20 pages, and it'll be inserted into 184,000 newspapers across Delmarva. That's being produced and published by the Independent News Media Group. They've been an incredible partner and an incredible help in putting this together and getting us into a very large assortment of newspapers, so we're very thankful to them. Also ran into a few elected officials at TAWS and other places that are making their way to the festival in September. Senator Van Hollen's legislative aide said that he is absolutely there and wants to be involved in some way onstage, in some way. So that'll be fantastic. The governor's office, obviously, making their plans, as well as other elected officials. So again, it's not a Salisbury thing, it's not a Wycomico thing, this is a state of Maryland thing, and that word is spreading and it's building. And then the final update that I wanted to mention is our Riverwalk Amphitheater, which is a city endeavor, but we will be using it for the festival. It is, we have a ribbon cutting on August 17th with First Lady Yumi Hogan. We will also have the Legacy Wall, which will be up there, and that's the Legacy Society members that are helping fund this festival. We still are accepting memberships, and we will continue to accept memberships until we have the 300, but we have, I believe, 100 and, I want to say 69 or 170 bricks that have been purchased. So we're quite thankful for those people that have stepped up and helped support the festival. I do want to acknowledge that Field Ops, the city of Salisbury's Field Ops, have been incredible partners. They have, they're always there, they have been installing permanent electrical panels to support our stages and our operations for the festival. They've been helping regrade plots of land and areas so that they become suitable for stages and for audience, as well as helping us divert waste away from the landfill. As we try to green our festival, we are going to be composting, recycling, and again, trying to reduce as much waste as possible. When you reduce waste, you reduce cost. Costs more to go to the landfill than it does to go to the compost. So we are committed to that, especially since we are so incredibly tied to the Chesapeake. It's not just a good thing to do, it's the right thing to do. And Ron Airy in Field Ops has been an incredible partner there as well, so I just wanted to say thank you to Field Ops. They've been fantastic. And then the Salisbury Zoo has been quite fun to work with. They are one of our partners in the family area. They will be having traveling, sort of wandering demonstrations throughout the festival. Another just memorable, crazy thing that I think our younger audience members and our adults are going to enjoy, as well as some other programs that we're excited to announce and will be announcing probably in the next week or two. Again, as the festival evolves, our needs evolve. Again, right now, that push for volunteers is there, and I know we're going to meet it. I know folks are saying, "I'm going to sign up, I'm going to walk up," or "I'm going to, you know, look at that as it gets closer." But we would love to have those folks on hand now. We have a orientation, a sort of volunteer rally set for September 5th at the Civic Center. We'll have hundreds of volunteers there, celebrate them, and then we're going to break out into training sessions, so each of those teams can get familiar with what they're doing, the system that they'll be helping with. So there's a lot of things going on, and it's a fast-moving ball, but we are, we're on top of it, and this is going to be an incredible, incredible adventure.
Great. A couple of points, just, I think would help. If you could, again, for the audience at home, hopefully, the audience at home, the websites, if they want to volunteer, could you just give us the...
Absolutely. It's, to volunteer, you just go to suregetconnected.org. It is part of the United Way of Lower Eastern Shores Online Volunteer Center. So if you go to suregetconnected.org, it's very easy. You can sign up for a few hours, you can sign up for all three days. You can sign up as a team, a company team, or a church team, or you can sign up as an individual or a family. It's, you get to pick the job you want, the time you want, the day you want. And we hope everyone will give us a few hours.
I know that one of the needs are drivers.
Yes.
So anybody that's, anybody who's listening to this, if you're a driver, if you have experienced driving passengers, please get on the website and volunteer. I know for a fact you're right because my family is all volunteering. They haven't done anything yet, but they're all volunteering, so I'm going to encourage them to do it.
Well, thank you. Yes, thank you so much. I know that families are doing this as a family event as well. It's a lot of fun. I even have people whose family members are traveling to the festival from out of state, but they're going to donate a few hours of their time, and I really appreciate that, and thank you to you and your family. Drivers, we definitely need drivers. I was speaking to Greg Bassett. He signed up for three days as a driver, so he'll be shuttling artists back and forth, either from the hotel to the airport or back and forth from there, or to the school shows. But we do need a handful of drivers, and we'd appreciate that help. We also need help with site setup and strike, so the week leading up to the festival, helping hang signage, setting up chairs. If you're handy with a hammer, they'll probably have you build a platform or two, but they'll never make you do anything that is beyond your skill level or your comfort level. But it is a great way to spend a few hours outside, working with your hands, and getting to know the festival from the inside out.
Great. Other questions or comments?
I just had a question for you, Carolyn. We got an email a couple days back about how much it costs per year that the city paid for the festival, which was $195,000 a year. Is this fundraising, because I'm just drafting an email back, unless somebody else has, then I don't have to?
I'm not aware that...
No, I got the email. We all, I'm sorry, we all. We got the email. I was just, if nobody else has emailed back, I'll email this gentleman back. Look, hands up if you want to do it. Look at this group. Okay, is the 100, is the fundraising to replace the $195,000 to put it back in for the second year?
I'm not aware of $195,000 being spent by the city. I know that...
It's $585,000 over three years.
No, I understand what you're saying. It's just I don't have that in my budget that the city is spending that...
Don't worry about that question. I was just...
The festival is paying that much, not the city.
Yeah.
The city, okay. What I got from Julia was the city will pay the NCTA a total contracted amount of $585,000 over the agreement period, $195,000 per festival.
This festival will pay that much.
Yeah.
The city's not paying that much.
Oh, thank God I didn't send this forward.
The city, I think, what we budgeted, I mean, remember, we budgeted year by year.
Yeah.
But what we budgeted in year one was $100,000, or not even, it was like 70, 70...
Okay, so that's a miss.
Yeah.
That is a contract amount, but that's the same as...
Yeah, don't worry about it.
So you can answer it.
Ah, I'm going to send this to you. So, all right. So then, don't worry about any of those other questions. I'll email Mr. Potman, Potman myself, on the half the ball of this. The only other question I get in the grocery stores, where's everybody going to park? Is there something on your website that allows people to know where that's all going to happen?
Absolutely. Thank you for...
And I'm actually saying that so that you'll say, as Jack was getting you to do, those things out loud.
That's the next thing.
Yes. Thank you so much. Yes, if you go to our website, there is parking and directions, so not only do we have, and I think the count is around 1,300 parking spaces adjacent to the festival, through our metered and public lots, which will all be free, the garage, which will be free to, we have about that many spots, I know those are going to fill up quick. We also have satellite parking at the Civic Center, including additional acreage at the old Salisbury Mall. So with those two combined, we have thousands and thousands of parking spaces for folks. The shuttle is also free. It'll run, pick up every 10 minutes and run in 30-minute cycles. It'll start, I believe, about an hour before the festival starts and run until officially an hour after, but I've talked to Shore Transit, who are running the shuttle, and they'll get people home when they need to get them home, so that's good. And then we have several organizations that have been looking to this as a fundraiser. So I know at St. Francis, I believe the Scouts will be selling parking for a fundraiser, so that's right down the street on Riverside. I believe Trinity Church is looking to sell some parking spaces, as well as some of the private businesses right near City Park. So I think with locals knowing where to stash their car and how to get around, it's really our visitors who are going to probably utilize the lots that are posted on our site and as well as our satellite lot parking.
And what's that website, again?
The website? Thank you. You guys are so good. You get, yeah. The website where you can find this out is nationalfolkfestival.com. I almost, for a moment, I thought maybe that wasn't it, but it's nationalfolkfestival.com. And on there, not only can you find out parking and directions, there will also be a festival map that will be posted in the next coming days, as well as the full schedule of all the artists and performers. There is also bios and audio clips and music clips of all the performers and artisans. There's just general, a general fact for the festival as well, talking about accessibility, talking about water stations, how we're greening the festival, and things like that. Items that you're allowed to bring, items that you're not allowed to bring. And of course, the admission cost is on our website, which is free.
The only other thing that I have is a question that came up at one of the meetings that I attended a couple weeks ago about disability, the ADA, everything will be ADA accessible.
All stages and areas are ADA accessible. We've also had curb shaving done throughout the festival site, as well as an additional ADA ramp that is being constructed from the Riverwalk, and I believe up to, and I don't recall the name of the street, but between the...
Times Square.
Thank you, sir. Times Square Street.
Need Times Square.
And so we want this to be an accessible place for everyone at our satellite lot. We will have an overabundance as well of van-accessible handicap parking for people, as well as the Shore Transit buses being accessible.
Fantastic.
Oh, one more thing. There will be, I believe, six to nine performances, I may be a little short on that number, of sign language interpreters at the, on the stages, depending on if it's a panel discussion or a musician that will be doing interpretations for those that are hearing impaired.
Fantastic. Any other questions?
No.
I just want to challenge every council member to sign up for a shift, at least one shift, and the mayor as well. It's easy to do. I signed up for four shifts, so.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Everybody else here can at least do one.
Volunteer a year.
Thank you.
You signed up for mine, then.
Well, thank you. I greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, Carolyn. I appreciate it very much.
And I'll leave this...
Will these be some cards? Yeah. Well, I'll make sure they get them and use them.
Oh, I have some church. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up on the agenda, Ms. Glanz, Julia.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So a few weeks ago at a work session, the conversation arose around diversity and sort of the makeup of our team, and we honestly said that there was some work that needed to be done. So this past year, I participated in a leadership program, Maryland Equity and Inclusion Leadership Program, put on by the Maryland Commission for Civil Rights and University of Baltimore. And it was a nine-month program that walked us through, you know, what is diversity, what is inclusion, bias, you know, talked about many sort of different groups and dug into certain issues and things like that. And throughout it, we had to identify an issue within our workplace or organization and identify how we were going to work on that. So my project, and I partnered with Jill Clemmons, she's the HR director from College Park, which is a cool opportunity to partner with Peer City. So we focused on reducing implicit bias in the hiring process. So we sort of compared our cities, and you should know all of the information about us. We hire about 30 to 40 positions a year. We have three HR employees that do a tremendous amount of work in making sure all of those applications go where they need to be and things like that. One thing that's different between us and College Park is that we don't sit on all the interview panels. Some of them are managed, you know, with the management group in each department, depending on the size of the, and the position. So the goals of the project were to raise awareness of implicit bias in any hiring process, take specific actions to reduce the effects of implicit bias, and increase diversity through all levels of the workforce, and to start measuring using a baseline for future workforce. So right now, we don't have all the information that we'd like to see where we are with certain populations, but I think once we hire somebody, there's a form that we ask them to fill out, and it's voluntary, but it only asks some certain questions, and we can make that more inclusive to get a better baseline and to see who we have on staff. So for the goal of Salisbury that I identified was to increase the number of racial minorities in upper management or middle management, and then to increase gender diversity in certain departments. You know, police is heavily male, field operations is heavily male, finance is heavily female, so trying to get more of a balance in those departments, for example. So this is a picture that we took about a year ago at a staff retreat for department heads, and I use it to show how we all look the same. You know, at the top, we're, we've got a good balance between men and women, but we, you know, the team is all white. So I use this as a, you know, good way to show that. Digging into how to make a change, this is sort of the 30,000-foot view of how to dig in. So first, we have to review and identify the process. So what does our hiring process look like? Identify where implicit bias could be a factor, which is sprinkled in throughout. Develop and improve process, implement that. Raise awareness with staff, so there's, I think it's Harvard developed an implicit association test that helps you identify where you might have bias that you might not know about. So my recommendation is that anybody that's on a hiring panel has to take that, it's a short, short quiz, and then to continually provide more implicit bias training. And we're starting to do that much more, which is really helpful. We provided a diversity and inclusion leadership or training program this year, which went over really well with staff. Everybody really liked it. And then we've got to measure it, like I said, and then review and evaluate outcomes. And so digging in deeper, how we're going to do that is looking at where are we post-jobs? Are we just advertising Liz left, but just in the Daily Times, or just online? Are we targeting groups that we want to apply? And it's hit or miss, depending on the job here. Neutrality of ad language, which I didn't really realize beforehand, you know, you take engineer position is written in like heavily male language, which you wouldn't think, but there's websites where you can sort of upload your language and it brings it more to the center. And so I would imagine, you know, finance is probably written in a heavily female way. And then looking at how we offer applications, is it online, is it paper, those things? Is it accessible? Is it ADA? Is it easy to apply? Before we get to the interview stage, you know, should we remove names from applications? Names carry a lot with them, and you can make a lot of assumptions. We've had that conversation about removing names possibly. Making sure that we're asking relevant questions during interviews, and that our rating sheet makes sense, and that we're rating on things that matter and that you can measure. And then with the interview panel itself, making sure that we have a diverse panel and that they're well-trained. You know, frequently, your panel will look like that picture there, and that's not necessarily the, what you want to put out to a candidate because they might not want to come here and conduct standard interviews. And then finally, debrief with your panel and making sure that you're having a relevant discussion and not talking about, you know, fit is a dangerous word when you have an interview, you know? He's just not right, the right fit. Or what is it specifically? Is that code for something else? It's important to discuss biases after and before the fact, and then to make sure you're measuring the number of candidates, minority candidates that are offered the position because that's telling if, you know, based on how many apply, how many get off, how many get interviewed, how many get offered, how many accept. All of those things tell a different story about your organization. And this is just some information. Some of it's a little dated. Looking at the professional sector within the city of Salisbury and the police department, upper, yeah, upper management, middle and upper management. So we've made some strides with women in both the police department, they're yellow, and for the professional sector. Other areas have not improved so much, so we have some work to continue to do. This is College Park. So some of the hurdles, time, buy-in, funding, resources, the political environment at the time. And as you can see, the bottom is College Park, the top is us. You know, we do have a more diverse team at the bottom, you know, at more entry-level positions, and so it's just making sure that we're giving everybody the opportunity to advance, and we're starting to do a really good job at that. I'm really happy with that. So, yeah, making sure that we have buy-in from HR. Jeanne is here, happy to help with this process, she's been great to work with. You know, our office is obviously bought in. Spread the work, create a team, because it's easy to get bogged down if it's just one or two people working on this type of work, because it does take a lot of effort. Baby steps are good. We're not going to be able to solve this problem in a year. It's going to be a continual process. Regionalize partnerships, take advantage of, you know, sharing, training opportunities and things like that. So that's why it was really great to work with Jill from College Park, because now we know we can work together and share resources and things like that. And then the last thing is just for, a reminder for me to work with my group. So I think that is sort of the base, the basis and the framework that Jeanne and I and some other folks are going to work on to try to change our makeup a little bit, and knowing that it is a marathon and not a sprint. But we need to be intentional about it, and we're dedicated to be doing that.
Have you identified any other areas where we could advertise for open positions? I mean, I know that's part of the issue.
Yeah, so Jeanne's been digging into that a little bit, and so have I, identifying some partner organizations for specific, you know, we, she was looking at what is open right now. You know, we've got an engineer, project manager open, I think, police officer she was looking at, and what makes sense to push some of that information to, what universities or organizations would take that. But whether it's, if it's more, you know, local positions that we think we're recruiting from, whether it's working with local churches or other organizations to just push that, I'm sure they've got a job board or read it at local meetings and things like that. But it's taking the time to think about where we need to advertise.
Comments or questions?
I just want to say, I'm glad that we have gotten to this point, to where, oh, we're discussing this, and hopefully that we'll get on the way with hiring of some of the minorities in our community, because we do have a very diverse community, and we need to see some of the adversity in the city in these positions.
I have something, I don't know if it'll be relevant, but one of the companies I managed had five plants throughout the United States, and we had a very similar problem. But we also had a unique problem, which we sort of solved by the plant in California. As everybody knows, it's a high Mexican population in California, and we had very few Mexicans working in our plant. That was one of the, one of the groups that were identified as a potential issue for us. And we hired, we went out of our way to find some Mexican employees, and it was, amazing thing happened, within four or five years. They were all very good employees. I mean, always there, always on time, you know? And whenever, whenever a position would open up, we'd say... And whenever, whenever a position would open up, we'd say, we would post it internally first and we would get referrals from family members and not just for workers in, on the line, but also, well, my sister is an accounting person. And we started recruiting that way and that worked fantastic. So do we do any referrals, like from the city employees from?
We have a referral program with the police department currently, but that's the only sort of form-ized.
Field ops?
Not current.
Julia, some of this, especially with, and I'm just going to speak directly to the fire department and the police department. Every year that I was mayor, it was always, well, they're going to change what the, what some of the requirements were to get that national certification or that state accreditation to get the job. And every year it was, that'll open up the floodgates for us to get more women and minorities because these department heads, we didn't just start talking to them about women and minorities. We've been talking to them about them all the way back to Mayor Tillman when she was first in office. I know that for sure. So I would be interested in you all going back to them and going, have the standards, some of the accreditation standards for police officers and fire department personnel changed because we cannot be, it can't be enough just to find another secretary. And in the fire department, that's where minority women go. Love them and they're some of the best, but that's where, that's where we get our number from there. And, you know, it's 2018, not 1986. So it's time to break up this good old boy network. And if you have to do it, you know, do it using those things that they say are changing in their industries to get them. Because it's like when, you know, the requirement for the jacket changes at the national fire department level and somehow we get back down here, budget and there's 700,000. Because the national standard is, well, when you want a jacket, we cite the national standard. When we want more minority employees, we need to make sure that they are.
Yes.
We, and I would suggest this, and I say this with all due respect to our new chief and to Chief Duncan. Saying that you now have some changes that allow you to hire some more doesn't get more hired. You have to go do that. It's always nice to see the fire department out there with kids from the high schools that are our minorities. I want to see an assistant captain. So I would say to you, and we love them all equally as friends and as employees, but if the standards have changed, then they've changed a while ago and they should be on it. So if you'll check with them about those things, I'd appreciate it.
And the other piece of that, when we're talking, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road, because this is not a thing that we're going to do and then next week it's all going to happen. Maybe part of it, we need to be more aggressive in reaching kids when they're in elementary school, middle school and high school to change the perception of the job. Because I think part of it is a perception too. In every, in every city across the country, in some communities, in minority communities, there's a perception of the police department. And I think that inhibits people applying as well. So.
Because we've addressed the money. He has, what, twice or three times now? I did four or five times. It was always, we can't get people because they're leaving for the state police or they're getting a better job in Anarongo County at the fire department. We've addressed that and we have committed to making it so that we are very, very, very competitive. And when you look at the school system, which would, or the university, which would be our, not competitors, but our major apples-to-apples comparison, they're a lot more diverse than we are. So, you know, I think it's, well, it's actually going to depend on you two, really. I hate to say it that way, but.
But it has to be pushed out to at least, you know, going after children when they're younger, bringing a positive perception of the fire department, police department, public works to attract them when they're young for a possible career choice. So I mean, if we're not, you know, and I think that's something that, you know, we've on and off with some of the programs, they're never consistent over the years. There's years we don't do anything. I think it's something that we've got to make a commitment every year that this is important, that we're actively doing this, we're actively in there to change the perception. Because if we don't, 20 years from now, the next council and mayor and everybody else at that time is going to be having the same conversation. So it's something that we have to commit now, long-term.
Do we have those training programs here in our high schools?
So there are some, some programs, State Fire Department, they're looking at sort of revamping and working with the school board to improve the CTE program with firefighting. I don't know the specifics about that, but there are some, you know, aligning groups with CTE that we can partner with. And just going back to what you were saying, Mira, the fire department has just started, but it's a really cool program. They did the junior fire academy this summer and it was like seven through 11-year-olds or something like that. But the makeup of those young students was very diverse.
Yeah.
All different nationalities, males, females. But what they've, what they've decided to do next year is to offer that same age group, but then another age bracket so those kids can keep moving up and have a different skillset each summer. So then they funnel right into the cadet program and then they can go right into a firefighter position when they graduate high school. And that's, that's the mentality that we need to be doing. And the police department has the explorers program. So we just need to continue to build upon that work and we'll be in good shape.
I know that the fire department, every year participates in Career Day. I've done it, the mayor's done it and I think a few others have done it as well. And I believe that that program came out of the response that we got from the students during those Career Day things. And I think that's a great, and you have to make it continuous because if there's a break in it and they lose touch with it, then they're going to lose interest in it. So I think that's, that's an excellent idea.
Is the city currently recruiting at the HBCUs in the state? We have four HBCUs in this state and HBCUs tend to be intensely diverse communities.
Some, some, but not, not with, not with even intentionality. So, you know, not with equal intentionality. You know, I can think of specific examples where recruiting for certain positions has been done in-state and out-of-state at HBCUs. And I can think of other times where it probably could have been and wasn't. So I think, I think that's a really good point though because, you know, obviously there's a dozen, there's more than that. Obviously, there's a thousand facets to how to change your, the composition of your organization, right? And some of it starts planting seeds with young people. Some of it starts with recruiting. Some of it starts with your efforts to retain and promote. But, but I mean, there's a relatively straightforward one that, you know, focusing recruitment at, you know, if there's a program at Morgan State that, you know, lines up neatly with our needs, what are we doing to get in the school? And sometimes, but not equally across the board.
Because the criminal justice program at UMS is the criminal justice program at the school. So you have, you know, a captured audience that's looking to move into the workforce. So it seems like, and with them being attending a public institution, the majority will be residents of the state of Maryland. You know, it seems like a healthy ecosystem that we look into Morgan, Coppin, Bowie and University of Maryland Eastern Shore especially.
With the UMS criminal justice program, I think, I think part of it comes down to relationships too. We've got to, we've got to figure out how to get in the door and be exciting to the administrations and to the leadership of a particular program, not just direct to students or not just showing up for career fair. You know what I mean?
I can connect you with the leader of the criminal justice program.
Well, I think, I think my point there is, the last time that I know that we were at UMS, which was this past year, you know, I think we had a hard time, and I'll speak for our police department, I think they had a hard time competing with, I mean, there was a presence from federal law enforcement, from big city agencies, and I think we had a hard time competing and being exciting. And which, again, that's just incumbent upon our team at police or wherever, you know, fire, wherever, engineering being, figuring out how to be, you know, exciting and how to, you know, how to say, hey, staying on the Eastern Shore and being in Salisbury is not less than, it can be a really great career path.
Yeah. And I carry that message to the students. It's worked for me thus far. But I could put you in touch with Dr. Boyd and the city could have a captive audience with students.
And you know, that's, so SPD, I mean, that's the hardest part of our organization. That followed by engineering are the hardest two parts of our organization to recruit, to recruit anyone and to diversify as well. And engineering, by the way.
I know an engineering guy who's associated with engineering.
Is there anything that we, and I'm not sure, I'm sure with your matrix and the way that you do what you do, is it possible to come back in four months or six months and see what the total number of contact, you know, the total number of contacts are? Because I wish, I had said to Julie before the meeting started, you know, in 2014, The Daily Times did a huge front-page article, Jim Irtan's white, John Pickett's white. You know, and, you know, it's, you are, you don't, what you serve doesn't look like you is really what that, and I think it said, now, we have now gone from, at that point, we were not minority-majority, but we are minority-majority now. So when you go and you look at Washington DC or you look at Baltimore, I mean, you, their fire stations are much more diverse than ours. How do, how did they get that way? You know, maybe if they're at UMS, they're like, been here for four years, sorry, went to the beach. You know, maybe we've got to go, maybe we've got to go to somebody who's out, you know, out 200 miles and says, and it's not like we don't already have live near your work and ways that they can become homeowners and all of those things.
No traffic.
And, yeah, and no traffic compared to all those places. So, you know, I don't, I just don't want the three councils down when we'll probably be three minorities asking the same questions again because it does come down to those mid-level, it does come down to those department heads and having them have to be committed not to a certain percentage, not to a certain, but it's, you, if the house is on fire, nobody's going to care what you look like when you come. Okay? But if there is a dispute or there is a discrepancy or there is something that is wrong, that's where those issues start to come into play, if there is bias. So I just, I don't know how we hold them accountable to anything that you're doing already.
But, but you're, I mean, there's two, there's two ways to measure success, right? There's the end of the tailpipe metrics and there's performance indicators that say, these are the things, and I don't think we've done it, and just broadly, I don't think on, I think we could do a better job of measuring performance indicators. You know, the end of the tailpipe, you know, okay, what's coming out? Is it, you know, two parts silicon dioxide? I'm not that engineer, but, yeah.
That was pretty good.
Yeah. I can pull that up in there. Thank you. But, you know, are we measuring, yes, yes, we're going to measure results, right? And that's what I'm most interested in. I think it's what we're all most interested in. But are we, are there things that we can measure that say, you're making the right efforts? So is it, is it contacts, you know, is it applications received? I don't know what those are, but.
It's a progressive dashboard is what you need.
Okay.
Which, which is, it's the pieces of the puzzle that gets you to the tailpipe. And I think that, you know, let's not, we're talking about it, okay? It's the first time that I've, since I've been here, that we've been talking about it. Look at the, look at our city council. I mean, and things are happening. It's up to us to make sure that it goes forward. Giving the mayor and the, and the employees the tools they need to do the job, make sure they do that. And we just got to keep your foot on the pedal. You can't take your foot off.
And I think, I think you have. I mean, but, you know, what Councilman Irtan said, I mean, being more competitive in general is going to help us have the option to, you know, improve our organization by diversifying our organization. You know, you don't have that option if, you know, people don't want to join your team. You know, so that's a baby step forward that, you know, we've been, or a series of baby steps forward we've been making, but, you know, no doubt, we can, we can make plenty more.
Yeah, I think, I think the metrics that we're, that have to be developed will give us, are we on the right track? Is the graph going in the right direction? And if it is, we just keep, keep going. If it's not, we tap and we come back and figure out what we need to do. What works, what doesn't. Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
By the way, can I just add the program that Julia went through? You sent out to, did you send it to all staff? We sent out the message to all staff. I don't know what that gesture was, but you can tell me.
Jen's interested.
Oh, okay. All right.
Which one?
Diversity and inclusion leadership program. To all staff, encouraging them to participate. And I think the more we have senior leaders in the organization participating in programs like that and learning best practices from other organizations, it'll help us.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next up, Mrs. Miller. Come up and see us. How are you?
Good, thank you. What you have in front of you is a resolution for the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Delmarva Power to be in their energy efficient communities program. We looked into this program as a part of the guaranteed savings energy performance contract that we are currently negotiating with Honeywell. To be able to tap into some of the rebate funding that Delmarva Power can offer for certain energy conservation measures, this is the program that we would enroll in.
Questions?
I don't want to do anything just until Mr. What's-his-name is sitting in front of us and has a long discussion about our energy usage and costs. This might be good, but we've, we have, not you, we have consistently asked to have Mr. Anderson here to discuss the issues of cost. Am I keying him into bed for him or bed for him?
Okay, thank you.
I just, going off and asking to find someplace to find more savings is always a wonderful thing, but I have questions about non-savings that have happened several times over the last two years and it's always been embroiled in Mr. Anderson and so maybe, Mr. Heath, if we could talk to Mr. Anderson soon, I'd be happy to support this.
On that, with Honeywell, are we negotiating to stay with them? Are we going to do an RFP to look at other companies, some that are local, that offer the same services?
No, we've already gone through the RFP process. Honeywell was selected. We are in the investment-grade audit phase. We are about at the 90% phase right now where we are making, kind of, we have like a fork in the road to determine, we have a couple of cost scenarios in front of us, a couple cash flow scenarios. Each have their own energy conservation measures. So we are really investigating the pros and cons of each right now, but that is strictly with Honeywell. And really, this MOU with Delmarva Power is to allow us to tap into rebates that would help offset the cost of some of the improvements.
Based on reading this, I get that it's similar to the home plan that they have. Am I correct? You know, where they.
I don't know enough about the home plan.
If you go to LED lights, they take a certain percentage of what it costs you to put them in and they'll rebate you those. Is that similar?
So the home plan that I signed up for, but I'm paying more in my electric charges?
Well, I think that's one concern.
For real?
And the thing that you get during the day that says, whatever you do, don't turn anything on between four and six.
And then they put a permit on.
That's how you can save, is what, is what I'm told.
And then they put a permit on.
You can save if you turn everything off in the house and don't, laundry, dishwasher, that's how you can save.
I'm still, I'm on that program. I'm still trying to figure out how my personal bill's gone up $75 a month and I'm on that program, so I don't know.
Well, just to be clear, this is not that.
I didn't want to put a permit on. On your doorstep. Based on my personal experience with this company, I don't trust them. I don't trust them because we, they raise their rates and raise their fees.
Yes, they did.
And so we had to do a budget amendment for $150,000. Plus, we had to increase our electric charges for the city this year at the rate of about $10, $11,000 a month. So my trust and faith in this company is like right here.
And I think sometimes that we get into.
And I think sometimes that we get into these, it's like the, it's like the coal commercials that are out there now, with, you know, little girl who was born in the coal mine, and she's brought up, coal is good for America, is what it says. This looks to me like it's another one of those Delmarva Power commercials, where on one side you know what they're doing to you behind their back, they've got a pretty commercial, and everybody thinks it's nice, that's nice, that's nice that they do that, while what goes up is every single solitary street light in this city that we went back for. How much did you have to come and ask for? To get us out of that hole?
Seventy-five grand.
I thought we were going to have to tie Mr. Heath down his chair. You know, unless, if, you know what it is, Jen, I think if you came in and said, I did these windows, and they gave me fifty dollars back, let me do ten more windows, and they'll give me, you know, five hundred dollars back, I, I could.
Okay, uh, for us to really even get down to how much they will support.
Okay.
This is step one, okay? Step one is entering into this MOU, um, you see all the requirements, that's clearly defined in the packet, we are already going down that path with DPNL to try and understand if we do Energy Conservation Measure A. Here is the approximate rebate we can expect to get. We are, we have gone down that exploratory path, but they can, they're, this is kind of the, one of the first steps in that.
So the MOU is non-binding for future?
Correct. On, on our part, yes, we don't have to do any of the energy conservation measures. Is that what your question is?
That's the first question.
That's a, yes.
Just, I just feel like we've done so many of them over the last fifteen years, and...
And, and we have, and we have gotten grants from, I believe, MEA and other entities. I am exploring some conversations with MEA as well for other grants, but this was one of the components of the whole, I'll say, financing picture on how to pay for these improvements that could help the city save money in energy costs.
I feel, I apologize to you for being sort of stuck in, we're the people who, a couple months ago, had to, because they got a rate increase from the Maryland Commission, and nobody knew it was coming, and then they come back and they say, well, your street lights have gone up, and you, you now owe us, what was it?
It was like a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, just, you know, and it's.
That was a budget amendment for last year, so, that's just.
Delmarva Power, take it and give it.
I have, I have a similar, I have history that makes me, makes me very nervous with these things, because, um, you know, when I look at, uh, things that are covered, uh, areas that are covered and inclusive, um, I get nervous when I see chillers, HVAC units, variable frequency drives.
So I, I do think we need to clarify this, we're, this is not about approving those projects. That's already, that's already, um, the process for that has already gone through council, you know, for determining whether or not that's possible, and whether or not the project is feasible, and then there's still stages of that to come in the future. Uh, this, one of the things that we tasked in our contract with Honeywell, was they had to come up with grant, you know, things to pursue, rebates, they had to produce that. I think this is just one of those possible ways that, in other words, you know, the city's not going to save oodles of money, city's just not going to spend money, and is going to use savings to pay for the debt service, to pay for these projects, chillers and things like that. You know, that's, that's the endeavor that we're going down with this, uh, energy savings or performance contract. But one of the things that we said was, if you need to get there, and we want you to pursue it no matter what, but if you need to get there, to get to that point where the debt service can be paid for by the savings, if the savings alone doesn't cover it, you got to find grants, you got to find, uh, rebates, whatever, and this is one of the ways we can get a rebate.
Nobody from, just a question, nobody from Delmarva Power chose to come with you today because a team energy champion is supposed to be assigned to us?
Yes, we've already, we've already talked about that. We've have, we've had calls for probably the last couple months with Delmarva Power to introduce the project, introduce the energy conservation measures, uh, get potential subcontractors pre-approved, get Honeywell approved, so there's been a lot of work in the background that's been happening. I was fully aware of all this, I vetted it with Amanda Pollak, the Director of Infrastructure and Development.
I was just wondering why they, nobody came with you.
I didn't really think it was necessary.
We'd have got her.
Because to, to me, it's, if we want to help fund the project, here's a vehicle to help do that. Maybe I'm seeing it more simply.
No, I think you're seeing it exactly the light that you showed, where, where we are, is, where's the guy from Delmarva Power, we need to talk to him about that, you know, in the smoky council chamber, you know, about your.
We have all the faith and confidence in you.
In you, oh, yeah.
It's, it's, the other people, we have no faith and confidence in.
I love that we keep calling it DPNL, that does say something about our ages and our...
It's very expensive to change your, your logo. I just, I just have one, one question for our attorney. Solicitor, sorry. We, you've seen this document? It does not bind us to any future relationship with them?
No.
Okay.
Well, it, it, this will be the controlling, uh, relationship with DPNL, but until we initiate these energy savings, which is a separate contract with.
So this binds us to nothing except being able to go forward to the next step?
To go to the next step, and the energy champion would be Honeywell in this case, am I right about that?
No, no, that's not, no, that is somebody from the city. Uh, a member of the Department of Infrastructure and Development that has already been selected. Tony Fischelli. Sally?
Okay, any, any other questions?
I better not say anything.
We're all.
My life will probably go again just.
We've all, we've all been, we've all been through this, and, uh, yes. And, and it has nothing to do with you.
I understand.
Has nothing to do with you. It's our pain that we've experienced in the past. Would you care to say anything?
I, I'm on the same page as you, I treated this discreetly from other relationships with the energy company, and you know, I would just like people to keep in mind, if you don't make the energy saving efforts in your home, think what your bill would be. So it's really just keeping pace with what we expect with modern technology. So your bill is going to remain the same as old.
Okay, that's true.
Yep.
It's called a Maryland Trade Commission allows you to raise your rate without any comment of what happens.
No, I mean, I didn't like what occurred there, but I think that's separate and distinct with what we're trying to create here, it just creates a conduit for us to get discounts on transactions, should we choose to engage in those transactions.
That's why, that's my question.
Yeah.
But I would like to respond to Ms. Jackson's comment about freezing the, that, that comes up in the next step, where you talk about cutting back your, uh, your voltage during a certain, that has nothing to do with this. That's the next phase.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
No, no, I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying. Okay.
Do we have any idea what our energy consultant would say? I mean, I don't mean to bring it back up, but how many times have we been sitting here going, where's, is it Dick Anderson?
Yeah.
Richard, oh, it's Richard.
It's Richard. Okay.
As far as what?
Just, you know.
He supports it again as a conduit, as a vehicle, to be able to tap into these rebates.
And somebody's already been appointed from the city to be the team champion?
I think he's on the green team, Tony.
Yeah, he is. Tony's on the green.
So it seemed like it was a natural fit? Fully supported?
Again, I, I just, keep us, to keep us on track, this is strictly, there's nothing to do with any cost or spending or programs, it's the first step in a step of, in many steps, to get to the endpoint, if we choose to do that.
Yes.
And we'll do that on an ongoing basis as the things come up. Okay? Okay? This is interesting. Okay.
All right.
Uh, let's, let me, let, let's see if we have consensus to go forward with it. Pardon? April?
You want to do it down here? No.
I'm fine with it.
April?
I'm like.
No? Here.
I have no faith in these people, but.
I'm, I'm sorry, I wasn't counting, was that three no's or two?
Three no's, we have three no's. Let's take a deep breath. Any questions that would, that could clarify for you?
No, it's, it's, it's nothing to do with her, it's.
I understand that, uh, but that.
I have no faith in Delmarva Power, I have no faith in Honeywell.
I, I haven't, okay, I partially agree with you. My concern is that if we don't go to the next step, uh, as Mr. Rudicil so put it, that we may be facing higher costs without doing it.
I don't, I don't think it matters. I mean, if, if the state can allow them to increase our rates, what does it matter? It, it's, it cost us almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on everything that we've, that we've been trying to do over the past ten, fifteen years. And it, it doesn't matter. That's, that's why, that's, that's where I, I don't think it matters.
I'm not trying to argue.
No, you, you stand up for what you.
But why are we putting these two conversations in the same bucket?
Yeah, it really does.
I'm trying to get additional, I'm trying to get additional funding to help support the cost of energy conservation measures for the city, which can, which, right now, is looking like it could possibly include swapping out, um, um, streetlights for, the current Cobra head lights for LED lights. It could possibly include a very much needed capital improvement for the police station. Now, we don't know yet if, if what of these programs will be supported, but.
Let me explain to you why, because ten years ago, they tried to do the exact same thing, and not all the streetlights were done. So this is, this is, and I'm going to say it to you like this, this is corporate America circling back, and look, we're doing good things for municipalities again. For those of us that face electric bills that are sometimes hard to pay, I'm going to, I'm going to stick up for the people I represent. And I think if we had been tougher on these all-electric companies with the consultant that we've had over the years, then we would have saved enough money. If this building, when everyone came to me as mayor and said, you have to do this, and I couldn't get the county to do the same thing with me, this is, nobody is questioning, all of us have a long-sorted history with, do this, do this, do this, and then, oh, by the way, guess what's happening to your rates? Because they know we'll pay, because we're a municipality. They know, then when they get their raise, it's going to come here, and it's going to have to be a budget amendment, and I'm going to have to vote yes. And I did, as I recall, uncomfortably from this end of the table, on the rate increase that nobody knew was coming. So I, I just, it's, it's, the, the thing that concerns me is that there's three, there's almost as many pages of how to get out of it, than there are pages to get into it, in this as well, if you read this, so I just, I'm going to stick with my vote, Mr. Heath, and now I'm done talking about it.
Okay, I would just like to, uh, say that you will have a perfect opportunity at any point in time, once they bring the proposals forward, to vote no, on any individual piece of what they're going to propose. We're not there yet, that's my only. So I personally think we should, we should go forward with this.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
The only thing that, uh, even if we all agree on absolutely everything that's been said about, you know, the, the situation with Delmarva Power, and the frustration that we have with state law, and, um, and us getting, uh, you know, us getting our streetlights so that we can control them, and we can control the costs associated with them, all of which, you know, should be true, um, the only thing that this does is says that the taxpayers of Salisbury are going to have to pay for these projects, because most of them will have to happen no matter what, so, like the chiller replacement, uh, so all we just, all we do by not, you know, not taking grant money or rebates, is means that, you know, that's a tax increase, that's, just comes from our taxpayers.
I, I just, I just believe what we're doing in, in saying no to this is we're foregoing the opportunity to have the conversation and have the disputes. Hopefully, there won't be any, but should there be any, this creates the mechanism for us to say, wait a minute, we did X, Y, Z, you're supposed to give us this discount, if we don't do this, then that conversation can never happen. So, you know, the, and it's a little.
You know, they wanted to come and say to us, we know what the electric bill's going to be on your brand-new wastewater treatment plant, because that's always the scariest thing about the new wastewater treatment plant, was how much electricity it was going to go back in years. You want to come back and tell me how? If Delmarva Power wants to come back and tell us how we can cut electricity use at the power, at, at the wastewater treatment plant, because that was the biggest thing going forward with it, was not the grants to get paid for from the state, or what the city was going to have to borrow, again, it was, we have got to sit here on pins and needles and wait till this thing's turned on. If Delmarva Power came and said, the nitrogen levels are the lowest, as you all put out the other day on Twitter, we're going to give you a break, come on, Delmarva Power, come on in.
We're not hurting Delmarva Power, we're only hurting Salisbury.
No, no.
There are ways that I'm sure we can stick it to Delmarva Power.
We can tell how Delmarva Power must be with the citizens, if this is what this conversation could lead to right here.
Well, I think we should be careful to separate them.
Yeah. This just, it doesn't punish anyone.
I know, I know you said you're not, you're not going to vote for it. I'm looking for another vote to do it, though, because I think it's the right thing to do. If we don't have it, if we don't have it.
One of, I mean, what I want to see is a list of, you know, of possible projects that we can do. So you mentioned the LED lights, converting our streetlights to LED lights. I mean, in, in the first place, there's areas in our city that need streetlights.
So, now, keep, keep, I'll just frame this, this was only being initially explored for the projects that we're looking for as part of this, the Guaranteed Savings Energy Performance Contract, no other ones, okay? So right now, we have a proposed list, we're still going back and forth to fine-tune it, okay? A proposed list of energy conservation measures. Some of those are prescriptive, kind of off-the-shelf, you replace this light fixture with that one. Other energy conservation measures, like the work that needs to be done at the police department regarding the mechanical HVAC system, is what they would consider a prescriptive, I'm sorry, a custom, okay, um, program, which is viewed kind of much differently. So we already have built that list. That list is what's going to make up, if we enter, go forward with Honeywell, this Guaranteed Savings Energy Performance Contract, all those various projects packaged into one, they all get flushed out with DPNL to see which of those projects I will qualify, if any meet their qualifications to get rebates. It will be much easier to get a rebate for something that is prescriptive, like changing lights over to LEDs, as opposed to a very intense capital improvement project like that at the police station, that's custom, may not meet the payback terms that Delmarva Power would like to see. So we're working through all those right now, but yes, we do have a list right now that we're looking at.
So if, if I were in business, and it was my company, I would say to you, show me by project what the return on investment is. For each of those components.
Yes.
Have we gotten that far?
Yes.
Could you do me a favor, and if you do, especially the prescriptive ones, because I know the custom ones are a little different, but could you provide the prescriptive ones to us, so we could look at it? Mr. Mayor, is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're.
That would make me feel much more comfortable.
We haven't finalized on them yet.
Well, I think that.
Whatever, wherever.
Wherever you are. You make an investment.
Because Tamir's question about, you know, I want to see a list of all of the... Because Tamir's question about, you know, I wanna see a list of all of the, you know, proposed things. I mean, there was an hour-long presentation of all of those at council at 30% of all of the possible included. Or one, they had narrowed it to that list, and remember, they went through the water plants and the zoo and the police department and the fire department, and they went through all that. And so, yeah, whatever numbers are related to that now, like updated, I mean, I think we should absolutely present those.
I think that we're, the problem is, we're having a trouble, Mr. Mayor, with separating the, the projects from our past experience.
I mean, I think we got, we have similar feelings.
That's exactly right. So I think that if you gave us that information, where we could see what the investment is and what the return on that investment is, potential, then I think we can make a better determination. But still, if we could, is there any harm in bringing us back to the next work session after we've had a chance to look at that? Or is there a time, sensitive time thing on this? I don't mean, I mean, is there a deadline? That's my question. Is there a deadline?
No.
Okay.
No, it just, it just would, it doesn't really delay our project with Honeywell.
You've got the list anyway.
There is, just my recollection of the contract is that when we get the final audit, we have 120 days. Isn't that correct? Am I right about that?
For Honeywell?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so there is a deadline built into that, but that's once they present their.
That's correct.
So you have the numbers, and you get 120 days to accept it.
I have no trouble with that, once we see what the, once the numbers are generated.
I mean, I'll have to double check on that.
Would that work? We'll put it back on the work session, get the information, look at it?
Yeah.
Okay? Okay.
I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. And please, understand.
I do. It's fine.
Okay, next up. Anne, you're up.
Yep.
Change your hair.
You noticed.
I didn't recognize you when you came in, that's why.
Aw, thank you.
Anne's not here. She is. All right, we're discussing a text amendment.
Yes, so in your packet is a post-text amendment to allow a new definition for multi-family, multi-facilities, multi-use facilities, excuse me, and where the zones that it would be allowed in. Currently, the zone, it was, the issue was sort of discovered when a potential adaptive reuse project came to the city. And the, there was no fit between the use and the definition. So we now wanna focus on the particular project because that would be spot zoning. But after listening and discussing what the, you know, how to move forward and it's really, you know, to allow this adaptive reuse to happen, you know, there's other, there'll be other opportunities within these light industrial zones where we are starting to see vacancies and ways to redevelop in different, with changes in the industrial type zone uses. So we, we're proposing, the applicant did come from a developer, and that's perfectly all right. And the staff reviewed it and has been working with them, and some, some other developers have, you know, interest in other areas. It does require a public hearing and, two public hearings. One with the planning commission, and they make a recommendation to the council. And it's been to the planning commission, and it got a favorable, unanimous favorable recommendation on May 17. And now we're here for you, before you, I'm here before you for the introducing it so we can get it advertised for the second public hearing. And I don't know if you need me to read it, but it's, I think.
It's in, it's in our packet.
It's in your packet.
Everybody get a copy of it. Anybody have any questions concerning you?
These memos have gotten shorter and shorter and shorter as the years have gone past. For what, is my question?
What do you mean for what?
What is the particular project? What is the particular problem with what we have now? I understood what you said. It doesn't fit. What they wanna do doesn't fit. My, what I wrote down on the computer, but had to redo it. What didn't work for them that they need this text, this change?
What started it was, I'm just gonna be, I don't think of this as spot zoning. I'm gonna be very clear about that, because we don't support spot zoning. This would be citywide in the light industrial zones.
Okay.
An applicant who happens to be here has purchased a building that is vacant because the land use is gone. It's on, it's at the Lavinol plant. And what, they have a potential buyer, and they wanna redevelop that property. And it is light industrial. And the only way to redevelop it with the zoning staying the same would be to, with an allowable use, would be to qualify this as a shopping center. Well, they didn't, it's not a shopping center. It's, I think their client is a, is a gym. Not industrial, but, but a use that needs these big spaces that are very, very, very difficult to redevelop as industrial. And we're seeing that nationwide. So by not, it doesn't really meet the qualifications for a shopping center, but it does meet the qualifications for a multi-use facility if we have a correct, if we can define that and then allow it to be used. So that's what precipitated it. But again, I have to stress to you that this is, staff would not recommend spot zoning. And, but I see this as being applicable in other situations and redevelopment projects across the city.
Yeah, rezoning.
Can I add to that?
Actually, no, not yet, because you're a lawyer. And I sit next to one. He plays one on TV, too. So let me ask you about, if you say, it's, you don't wanna, what'd you call it? Spotzone it.
Spotzone.
You don't wanna spotzone it.
Really, it's not legal.
Correct. So I think what would have been helpful for me, if I had known that this was a gym that needed to go into this building over here, I think that would have been, because my, then that leads to my second question. If you do that citywide, you don't anticipate that, do you anticipate that it opens it up, opens up places that are, that have closed or maybe that are vacant to other? And then I would say, I would ask my colleagues, if you were to put a gym in the industrial park, I don't know what the, I mean, you have a couple restaurants, little restaurants that are down in there, a couple little rubber sole.
I'd like a gym on the north side of town.
Right.
There's nothing up there, and I have to drive all the way across town.
That's not true. I belong to a gym in the northland industrial park.
You do CrossFit.
Where?
CrossFit.
Yeah, that's back in there.
But the difference is, it's a single use in the building.
In the building.
The difference here is, there's, we don't have anything in our code that defines what you would do if you wanted to put multiple tenants in one building. Even if they were all the same use, multiple tenants.
That's what throws.
I see, I can remember when, when we first went over there and went Lavinol, when it closed, and we sat there talking with all of you about how that building could be rearranged. That's, that's why you're here?
Yeah.
All good. Fine with me. I'm done. Oh, the only other question I have would be from Mr. Tillman. I'm not sure you wanna put a particular lawyer and a particular developer company into your ordinance. That would, lines 20 through 22, that seems, seems a little.
They submitted the application.
They submitted.
But if you're gonna do it citywide for everything, is it necessary to?
Yeah, this, this really isn't spot zoning. This is a text amendment that would affect all properties in that zone. So it's not really spot zoning. It's, it's a text amendment. And the, the text amendment that they're proposing here, this multi-use facility is not something that exists in the district today.
I, I think Mr. Irtan's concern was with the language in the, in the ordinance itself.
No, I understand. Yeah, this was drafted by the, the city staff, not by me.
I don't have a problem taking it out, but they were the ones that raised the question.
Yeah, no, if you'd like, I don't have a problem removing it either. And we're just here for the work session so you all can, you know, have your input and let us know what you wanna do. I didn't rewrite the ordinance or go, like, try and make it what you might necessarily want because I wanted to hear from you, what you wanted.
Well, I think, I think the gist is what the last description was.
Yep.
Making the available for multi-use
Right.
in, in an area that isn't allowed right now. I don't think that, I think that's all that's needed.
I guess, and I'm not sure how to phrase the question, and you probably, and it's difficult to answer because it's rather speculative. You know, I have no issue with it, but what's, what are the negative implications of this? You know, how could this go awry, becomes my question? Because as I'm envisioning it, we could take large industrial buildings, break them up into multi-use buildings across the city, so then you can get smaller companies coming in, more startups coming in, so forth and so on. So we could put buildings to use. What should we be aware of down the line?
You know, I can't, I don't have a crystal ball.
Yeah.
I, I would, and I've been in land use for 30-something years. And you, and I've been here long enough to see shifts and.
And I don't do land use, so there's no way for me to sort of.
You know, given, I think we're gonna see this more and more and more. You have these large buildings, whether they are old in, in industrial park or these big box retail, you know, which, that doesn't necessarily.
But that could happen in this situation and in this situation.
Yeah, and maybe it's not gonna be redeveloped as retail, but maybe we would, you have, it goes into like a gym or an indoor soccer or a bingo hall or, you know. Like.
So what we're doing.
So I don't see any really adverse events.
Yeah, and that's, that's an acceptable answer to me. So ideally, what we're doing is creating flexibility so these buildings can more easily be used.
To encourage adaptive reuse. And, and cut down on the hurdles that you have to go through.
Sounds good to me. I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Pretty good. We have consensus then? Okay, thanks, Anne. I'll take care of that one. We got one more?
Yes, so this one, and I do have some visuals on this one.
Okay.
This again was initiated by a developer who wants to, who wanted to purchase some land that zoned, zoned, college and university. I always get the two, university, college. And it's vacant, and it's adjacent to the university. And they wanna put a hotel there. It's not university-owned, but it's land that is vacant that is on Route 13. And hotels were not permitted in that zone, which seemed very odd. I mean, you have allowed dormitories, and you allow those kind of living facilities, but there's nothing for parents or, you know, I mean, where I went to school, we had, the university had several hotels, but, but anyway. So I was really kinda surprised that that wasn't allowed. And to me, you wanna encourage these facilities in these larger use places because the university is growing leaps and bounds, and they're, you know, they have these events and places that parents wanna come see their, you know, need places to stay that are adjacent in walking distance to the events that they're going to be attending. And so once again, there's not a lot of opportunity, a whole lot of land that's zoned, university, college and university, that's vacant. But this is one opportunity, and it's on Route 50, I mean, not Route 50, Route 13. And it is walking distance, so it meets all this smart growth and sustainable growth.
This is the one that came before the planning commission?
Yes.
This is the one by the deli across the street, right, by the railroad tracks?
I can show you. It is.
By Honeysuckle, near, right there.
Canal.
Right there.
Yep.
That big, open expanse area.
And then it's adjacent to university housing apartments.
Right.
Is that in the, the, over the railroad, go across the highway into the dominoes, where the dominoes feed?
Yeah, dominoes and tracks, deli.
Yeah, back in.
Then, let me ask. Yes, it doesn't have it. And if we look at the plate tectonics of the planet about five billion years ago, the way it lined up, Dykes Road didn't come into Milford Street, and these two streets, Honeysuckle, didn't come into where you go across the highway. Is there any, and I would ask you this question as well, from the planning commission as well, does anyone ever stop and think, how are all those people going to get through there and out of there when it's almost impossible to get through there and in and out of there now? It's a great idea, and believe me, we need more places for people to stay. Obviously, you know, two years down the road with a folk festival. But if you look at that piece of land, if you lived there.
I've walked it.
Is that a place to put a hotel?
I think so.
Okay, well, I would respectfully disagree with you. But because my friends on the planning commission have said they think it's okay, I will go ahead and move this forward.
But I will say, to answer your question, they do think about that. And the city has hired a consultant that's doing a design for a rail trail that's going to go along that corridor that will connect the university, this piece.
For future people, that's fine. I'm worried about the people who live here now. They did give it favorable. And are anybody in the planning commission offering up any money to redirect the road, redirect the, another light, anything of that particular case? Because remember, across the street at the property where Court Plaza was, that's gonna go big, too. And I recall being in the meeting with them, I think you were in there with me, and I said, "If you could line up the street that comes out of the university behind TCBOI and the one that goes to the back of Court Plaza, I would let you do whatever it is that you wanted." But those streets do not line up. And that will mean someone will be sitting and sitting and waiting as more and more and more. Now, that goes back to, I don't mean to bring it up, but I'll bring it up again, but the redo of these, of these codes and these expectations we've been talking about for a couple years, it, it may be allowed, but is it okay? I mean, certainly with Devaco in that building and what they could possibly do there, and being able to get it, get in and out of there and have that road be that wide with that, with that few car traffic things on it. But what is that, and I'll just say this to you, because she's probably watching, but when Mrs. Smith calls me, and she's coming.
She's not gonna call you. She'll call me.
She's gonna call you. When Mrs. Smith calls me and says, "I'm trying to get out of Canal Woods, and bless you for sending the guys to put the bags up to make sure the water didn't flood, and thank you for changing it so that more people could park because there's no pool anymore." When she's sitting there, and she can't get out. Because I, I will reiterate, I do not necessarily vote for industries and things. I vote for the people who put me in office. And though that might be right, that might be okay, my question for the, for the five of us is, when you're sitting there 10 years from now, when there was nothing but Honeysuckle and those little streets out there that the Burdells lived on and half my cousins lived on, and it seemed like it was out in the middle of nowhere, and you got in and out of there just like that, we have the same infrastructure, the same issue coming out of the apartment complex that we went, we went through with you. Is that area? And I can remember going to get a pizza and going, "Just cannot believe I have to wait to get this pizza." But that's because I'm a person who's not used to traffic and used to being able to wait. But is that, without a signal, the place to put another place that houses, how, how big of a hotel do you have, Andrea?
They did not bring in the specifics, but I do wanna, do wanna say this. It will have, if, if this goes through and they purchase the property and they choose to develop it, they have to go through the process. And they'll go back to the planning commission, and we'll evaluate it for circulation. And it will have to be reviewed by state highway. And they may very well, and probably will, make them signalize those intersections, or one of them, the Route 13 section, but that's gonna be their call and not ours. But I would be very, very, very surprised for them not to. for them not to insist that that intersection have some, will have a deceleration and acceleration lane and will probably require a signal.
My favorite conversations, Jim, are the ones that you and I have about planning because like, you know, it's, it's, it's really interesting because you can come at this from a couple of different directions and I think end up in, you can end up in the same place or you can, you know, come from the same direction and end up in different places. You know, I think if we were to say, what's the right thing in terms of designing and building a sustainable city, it goes right back to the conversation we were having on the east side. Is the right thing would be to say, you know, you want more, you want it denser, you got to build more there. You can't build less there and you can't build nothing, you got to build more there. And then, but to your point about the infrastructure is, how's it designed? Is it connected? No, no, it's, it funnels everybody to terribly designed roads and the, you know, and it's, you know, I apologize to the engineer in the room, but it's because, you know, traffic engineers have planned our cities for a long time now. And if you even want to call that engineering, you know, and yeah, I don't care if I'm offending traffic engineers. Yeah, it's, it's offensive to engineering is what it is to say traffic engineers are engineers because they're not. It is, it is truly a shame that we have let our cities be designed by the people who, their only objective is how quickly can I move cars around? And, and what it ends up doing is it creates more locations where you can't move quickly through. And you can't move quickly, cars quickly through because you've designed it in such a way that you're channeling everybody to the same spot at the same times.
Jim, look at Only Road.
Oh, you don't have to tell me. I just, I just remember when the first, you know, I don't remember when Canal Woods went in there, but I can remember when all the other stuff started coming. We were telling people, don't worry, you'll be able to get out. And then another development came. And don't worry, you're going to be able to get out and.
Well, I was, that was before my time. I don't mean to sound expensive, but.
It's not, it's, it's a recurring theme over the past, whatever, sixteen, seventeen, thirty-two.
Go back to the official maps discussion. You remember that? The official street map discussion?
Did you get find it?
True.
Because they had trouble finding those maps.
No, the official street map.
Oh, the official street map.
That we designed as a community, we designed a street network.
I just, when I, when I take a look at what happened on South Division Street and we were adamant that if the, if the university housing, that was a little harder because that was part county, part city and there were some different requirements. And we were talking about being able to come in and come out. I mean, how do the kids get back over to, over to the university? I, I just, even signalizing that, I don't know whether or not, when you go across and do the little turn, is that long enough?
Well.
To accommodate everything that's there now, everything that existed before.
When the street light is, when the street light is, I go down there every day.
Yeah.
When the street light is on, it never backs up further than, there's enough probably for ten or fifteen cars at rush hour.
Right. When the street light's on?
When the street light goes on red.
Oh, it goes on red, okay.
Once again, this is.
When, when everything stopped and the, and the traffic keeps coming from the south.
Oh, you're talking about South Division Street? Oh, I thought you were talking about this one.
No, no.
No, no, that's, is that a blinking yellow still? It was, that's what it was on the, on the wall.
Yeah, the blinking yellow.
So, once again, this is citywide, which is only in this area and there isn't that much of, you know, the bulk of the university is in the county for the time being. But if they, the, the part that is developed that is not in the county that they, or that is developed that is not in the county, if they were to want to redevelop those fields or if they ever wanted to build their own hotel for their students' parents or visiting faculty or visiting whatever, they couldn't do it. So this would be for that entire zone and I, I have to stress that because it's important. There has not been an application or that, you know, what happens is somebody sees the land and then they, they say, you know, they look at it and they think, and they think they have a client and they, and doing their due diligence, they should come to check out the zoning and find out, is it allowed? And that's how these conversations start. Now, it may not be that it is even developed as a hotel. I mean, I don't know.
So we could conceivably, I'm just, I'm saying if we did this, how, how could we even make it more? If you go all the way out because we've rezoned all the way out. Only Road doesn't go all the way out yet to, but it will, it will eventually.
That's what I heard fifteen years ago.
I know, but there's a lot more there than was there before, that's for sure. I'm just wondering whether or not there's opportunities off Snow Hill Road as it comes up the other side where, where university starts to come towards that. I mean, if you're going to do it, let's market it so that.
I, I think the other question though about the, about this use specifically, hotel. And yeah, Snow Hill potentially at some point, at least where it connects to the bypass. And, you know, that's where even state highway advertises that that's how you get to the university now. That's the way the signage is working. But, you know, can our market sustain many more?
Our market can sustain a nice hotel.
Yes, I believe that.
Just say it till you like that.
I believe that. And, you know, but many more sustainably or long term? Probably not a bunch and I wouldn't put them all down there.
But it would be, it would be, I mean, I think that.
One, maybe, maybe.
So, anyway, that's.
It's not where I'd put any hotel, but, you know, I'm not paying for a hotel, so.
Well, it's, it's a targeted market for that hotel there. It's, it's.
It is.
But it, it creates opportunities, I think, for the university as the university had an opinion on this because you have conferences that come to the university, you want people that come to the university for the conferences.
Yeah, but university's going to want to go to the university so they can pay, you can pay them for the meal, not the conference center for the meal. I mean, that's, that's the big thing. That's the big complaint amongst us regular folk.
Well, I think he's referring to university holding conferences.
Conferences.
Where.
Visiting conferences.
Visiting conferences. They don't put them in the dorms. Thank God.
They did for Pam.
And, you know, they'll be, like I said, it would, if it's developed, it come, it doesn't come back to you necessarily unless you want to see it, but it would be a permitted use area where I think the structure is sufficient.
So, so they don't have, they haven't submitted any plans? They haven't gone to state highway administration, but somehow they've gotten to the planning commission already and they voted?
It's a, it's a.
I hate always being the last one to have questions and be like, well, Jim, the planning commission said it was okay. Well, I'm happy for them. They're not.
It's a conceptual thing saying that they wanted, they wanted to put a hotel on that piece of property.
And when, if we've looked.
And then when we get the plans back, we'll, we'll, it'll be in much more detail with things about access and exit.
So I'm trying to explain this in a way that I guess I'm not being clear. So there, somebody is looking at this land. That's what raised the issue. And they came in and they said, I'm looking at this land, can you tell me what it's zoned? And I said, it's zoned, it's whatever, you know, college, university, and they said, can I put a hotel there? And I said, well, I think I can say, well, I think so, but let me double check, you know? I opened up my book and in fact, it's not a permitted use and it's not a not permitted use, but if it's silent, it's interpreted as.
Not.
Not permitted. So they asked to come in and they sat down with Henry Ure and myself and we looked at it and they talked about, you know, what would, how could we do this? And I, I thought, well, I mean, I think you could change the text amendment. It's not a, it's not really spot zoning, but it does make sense to me in an air, by a university that you would have a land use like this, or allowable use adjacent to a university. And so they, they offered, they asked if they could apply for a text amendment and I said, absolutely. So I went to the planning commission and it's, they made a favorable recommendation.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, we have consensus. Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it. Last item on the agenda is ethics code. Mark. This is a state driven?
Yeah, it's a state driven. The state ethics commission sent out a memo telling us what, what we needed to do. Some of the things I think our code already had, what we've done to get is put together an ordinance that picks up the things that we feel that should or have to be done. But just to let you know right off the bat that there is an error in that line thirty-one. It should actually say, except as permitted by commission regulation or opinion. The current law says as permitted by the commission regulation or opinion, which isn't correct. The word the should have been taken out and then, but the word by should have been left in, so. I don't know how they both got pulled out there, but I caught that when I was getting ready today. The, the main thing that the, the current state law that's controlling seems to be interested in is making sure that lobbyists are regulated and people engaged in lobbying are regulated. The thing that I felt that we needed to do there was to add a, a requirement in, let's see, gosh. There's so many subsections here, I'll probably say it wrong. But under two oh four oh four oh C three, which by the, the way that works is that the participation prohibitions, except as permitted by commission regulation or opinion, an official or employee may not participate in a case contract or other specific matter, we're jumping over to line seventy-seven, for one calendar year after terminating, terminating their registration if they previously assisted or represented another party as a lobbyist in the matter. The provision does not apply to uncompensated or minimally compensated board or commission members.
What's the definition of minimally compensated?
Well, the state law actually picks a grade of an employee and defines it that way. And I'm not even familiar with what that compensation is for that grade of employee. There is a definition. We, we put in there that basically if the individual was going to be, I mean, the way it's worded now, if you are a paid employee who receives a salary, then it's going to apply to you. But if you are a uncompensated or minimally compensated board or commission member, meaning that, you know, get reimbursed for meetings or something like that, that it would not apply to you.
Anything not a salary.
Yeah, that's pretty much the way we tried to pick it up. I mean, if the council wanted to pick a number, we could certainly do that.
Okay.
So that, that was the point of that addition. Then the, the next section, which would be the same section, two oh four oh four oh.
G.
G. Basically, what the, what the law does there, this is one of the ones that's not mandatory, is they're trying to sort of define, it says an employee or official may not intentionally use the prestige of the office or the public position for the private gain of that individual or employee or the private gain of another. And then it says the prohibitions of this section include but are not limited to. And we're basically, these are things that the state was giving of as examples. But I don't think we should limit it to that because I think there are other ways that you could misuse the prestige of your office or the position that you hold. And I think that we, that our code should leave it open so that if anyone does that, that they could, you know, it could be pursued.
Well, by the initial, the initial thing that's already in there, number one, page number ninety-nine, that.
My feeling is that covers it all.
Right.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
And so we were just throwing in as, as examples, which would be included but not limited to those examples.
Is it necessary to say they're examples?
Well, state law has included them as violations specifically, so I was trying to pick up. Now, it's a recommended thing and I'm not sure, my feeling was what we said probably covered it all. But, and this is not mandatory, so we don't have to go there.
No, 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 no. I, I just, if it's in the state, then fine.
And then the other things that under two oh four oh five oh, these are the things that basically involve a lobbyist. And there were some mandatory lobby provisions and some non-mandatory lobbyist provisions in the memo that came out from the state. But the one that was mandatory required that when, as an employee, when you're filling out your conflicts of interest form, if your spouse is a lobbyist, you must disclose the entities for whom your spouse is employed or by whom your spouse is employed. So that's what we tried to pick up here. Is so that, in other words, any employee who's going to file a statement will include, all statements filed under this section shall include or shall disclose whether the individual or the individual spouse is a lobbyist required to register. And if so, they shall identify the entities that engage the lobbyist. And that same provision is picked up under two oh four oh six oh with regard to employees. The first provision applies to local officials and the second one.
One forty-seven through one forty-nine.
Yeah. And then, yeah, the, the second one, two oh four oh six oh is the one that applies to employees and appointed officials. And that one says officials and employees shall disclose in all statements filed hereunder whether they or their spouses are lobbyists required to register and if so, shall identify the entity that engage, the entities that engage.
The lobbyists.
And those are the only mandated, there are some other provisions in there that we're going to be obviously doing a memo to Kim explaining. For example, you may now post this stuff online if you choose, but it is not mandatory. If you do, whether you post it or whether you don't, the state has forbidden the disclosure of the address of the employee or official. Under the new rule, but we don't need to change our laws to do that. I think that could just be done as a matter of policy that the state, you know, recommends that and so we're not going to make those disclosures.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Mark, I was just, how, how much of a lobbyist does a lobbyist have to be for the definition of lobbyist?
I didn't include the, we have a lobbyist provision in our code already and I didn't make a copy of it today because I didn't think it needed to be changed.
We made a concerted effort to get special interests out of some of these boards and commissions, but nonetheless, they, you know, they still exist. But if you're not a registered lobbyist, none of this, I love how I'm not allowed to come back in here for a year and tell you I think the city council should, should vote on somewhere. But you have to be a registered lobbyist to have to fill out these forms to be on these boards when there are a whole lot of people from a whole lot of industries that.
The lobbyist is someone who is paid to do it. Not for example, if you're an advocate. Well, if you're an advocate for a group, you're not lobbyist.
Yeah, but we don't do it that way here. We're friends with these people. That's how they get what they want.
No, but if you, if you're out of office in that first year, Jim, you're still a citizen of this city. You have the right to come up and address the council as a citizen of a city. But if you're being paid by somebody.
I don't get to get paid after I'm no longer.
I mean, if you get, if you want to get paid, you can get paid.
I've been doing this since, been coming to city council meetings since nineteen ninety. Somebody isn't going to approach me and get me to come now?
I don't know. I mean, depends, I mean.
But, but it's that receipt of compensation that makes you a lobbyist. And, and I think that, that holds true everywhere.
Not enough, my people are all the time done.
I mean, if you're a realtor, for example, and you come up and speak on behalf of realtors, that doesn't make you a lobbyist. But if you're a lawyer who's paid to speak.
But it's still lobbying.
Okay, any prob, anybody have any question or problems with this? Okay, we have consensus then. Thank you, Mark. Anything for the good of the order?
Dikda Anderson.
You missed it. Jim had something.
Let's just do that once a year just.
I didn't miss it.
Thank you for attending our meetings. Appreciate it. Hope you, enjoying is not the right word. And lighting.
It's been informative and the folks in me, many, many more.
You can lobby, but we're happy to have you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.